Welcome everybody here to the regularly scheduled city council meeting of the city of Kingman, held at five o'clock on Tuesday, March first, two thousand and twenty-two. We turn, turn, turn some time over to our assistant city clerk, Tanya Ferguson.
Mayor Miles is excused tonight. Vice Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Mello?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker? He is excused this evening. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. We have no invocation tonight, so if we could stand for a slow pause and reflection of those who have been suffering and remember them in our prayers, and then we'd have the pledge of allegiance.
If you'd all join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance, in accordance with A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed and considered, and decisions made related thereto. First, item number one, we have call to the public. Comments from the public, those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Assistant Clerk Tanya.
Vice Mayor, we did not have anybody registered to join us via Zoom tonight, and we do not have any written comments received ahead of time, and we do not have anybody in the audience signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to our next agenda item, the consent agenda, item number two. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have two items. I hope all of us have had a chance to take a look at that, and are there any things that need to be pulled and discussed? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to have a motion as far as our consent agenda.
So moved.
Do a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item number three, old business, we have none. Item number four, new business, we have none. Item number five, department reports. Five A State Legislature, legislature mid-session update. Manager Foggan.
Vice Mayor, council, thank you so much. The Arizona State Legislature started in January, they've been hard at it, and we're about, well, we believe halfway through. At least, we are as far as procedures go between the House and the Senate. So as kind of a catch-up, we thought it would be a good idea to have our lobbyist, Tom Dorn, basically catch you up to speed on what's been going on, and maybe some highlights of what we're looking for in the next part of the session. So, of course, our, our very own Colleen Haynes has been actively involved in sharing information. I think she's seen a number of items, both in favor and opposed from us, and she's been working with Tom and his team to put together kind of some strategies. But as we reach kind of what they call the switch-over point, we've asked Tom if he wouldn't cover some of the highlights. So I'll turn the time over to Tom Dorn to kind of catch you up to speed. Tom, it's all yours.
Thank you, Ron. Hello, everybody. Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much for having me here to, I wouldn't have driven up, I would have driven up, but Colleen said Zoom was fine, and glad to talk to you. As, as Mr. Foggan explained, we have, you know, passed what many people call the flip or crossover week, and all the House bills have been heard in the committees in the House, and, well, those that were to be heard, were heard in the committees as well as appropriations that next week, led by House Appropriations Chair Gina Cobb. And now, this week is the start of Senate bills being heard in the House, and House bills being heard in the Senate. We still have some stragglers, hopefully by the end of this week, all bills will see floor action in the House as well as in the Senate, and we will truly be done with bills in the House, in the Chamber of Origin. With regard to some of the items that I've been asked to, to give an update on, mainly the budget, transportation, affordable housing, and water, those are all huge issues at this point. But unfortunately today, just wanted to give you a color, a little color commentary what's happened at the Capitol. Unfortunately, we had a, the Senate censored a senator for comments being made on social media, and you'll probably hear all about this, it's already on the national media from what I've heard, so here we go again. Representative Senator Wendy Rogers, formerly of Tempe, but now of Muntz Park, was censored twenty-four, I think the vote was twenty-four to three by the senators for social media comments. Senators Bartow, Peterson, and Rogers are south over against it, not voting, were David Gowan, Victoria Steele, and Kelly Townsend. So, and I think that Juan Mendez was absent, because he always is. Anyway, so that was the, that's what happened today, and you're going to hear about that, unfortunately. We just tend to have these situations in Arizona Capitol, it's just the way it is. Anyway, moving on to the issues, I'll start with the budget, because it's, you know, at the end of the day, that's what the legislature's there to do, is to pass a budget. And if they did nothing else, passing the budget, they would fill their responsibilities and go home. The budget, as you know, the governor has put his budget forward, and that was the first week on, on January fourteenth, when he presented his budget. Since then, the House and the Senate and the governor's office have been negotiating. You see them every time, and when I'm down there in the Senate hallway, about five o'clock, in comes the staff from the House and Senate, and the governor's staff, and they sit down in the conference room, and they, they chip away at trying to get the state budget passed, and, or get a template that they in turn can present. This is usually the time of year where we start to see a budget being presented, after the crossover week, and so that runs concurrently at times. However, the problem that we've had is, is the same problem that we've had over the last few years, we have too much money. There's, it's expected we are on track, and this is straight from the meeting of the Arizona Tax Research Association, at least recently, we're expected to possibly reach two-point-two billion dollars in surplus. It's just crazy that we have so much money, that is, the legislature has never had to deal with such money. Right now it's one-point-three, but it's on track to, to continue, especially as, as tax payments come in, and, and we continue to see the, the fruit of the labor of what the corporate, the business community has said has been good policy changes with regard to tax reform. So, as you all know, the Wayfair decision from a couple of years back, capturing on online sales revenue. So that's a good thing. So, it's a nice problem to have, it's better than having to cut budgets, but it also leads to people wanting to spend money on things and withholding their vote. It'll be interesting to see, you know, with the whole Senator Rogers situation, you know, how's that going to impact the budget? So, you know, a lot of people are speculating already, so, but everybody has a reason to hold out their vote, and hopefully we'll get through it no later than June thirtieth. With regard to, so there's several items on the budget, if you, if you're interested or curious about anything specific, I, I can do my best to get that to your, get it to Colleen, so we can get that information to you ASAP. I know, I tend to talk a lot, so I apologize, just getting right to the main issues that we wanted to talk about. I'll start with, with water. We're very fortunate from our district here to have the three legislators that are very committed to working on the water issues. As you know, Representative Cobb had a press conference to really promote the whole use of the rural water issue with Governor Bruce Babbitt, and that was held last week, and I know you, the Vice, Vice Mayor, were going to come down, but unfortunately couldn't make it. Former council member and supervisor Travis Lindonfelter, he was there, and it happened to be chamber day, so I talked to Becky, and she happened to stay for the, for the press conference on behalf of the King and Chamber. So it was, it was great, and it was very well attended, I think it was covered well in the media. Just to point out, there is a need to, to address the rural issues. One of the things that, that Babbitt, Governor Babbitt presented, when he was involved in the water, in the Groundwater Act of nineteen eighty, he said that there was an intention, it was, it was expectation that the rural issues would be taken care of, and unfortunately that didn't happen. So, we'll see what happens here, but Representative Cobb has been fantastic as far as fighting. She actually did a hostile amendment on to, with regard to rural management areas, you know, her bill twenty-six sixty-one. She struck it on, she offered, she put an amendment on the floor of the House to put it on to Representative Yale Griffin's bill, water bill, twenty-eight thirty-six, and it, she was successful. And so that was fantastic. It was truly a shot across the bow that we're, we're at war with regard to, pardon the pun, I apologize for that, that we are truly here to battle for rural water rights. And so the bill was immediately moved to be retained on the calendar by Representative Griffin. So you have Leo Biassu, you voted with Gina Cobb, you had John Kavanaugh of Fountain Hills, there were about three more Republicans that I can remember joined with the Democrats to pass, pass it. So, water in the budget, and transportation, and housing are all going to come down to the wire with the legislative session. If there is more you want to talk about with regard to water, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Affordable housing, while that started with a, with a bang, if you will, we were going to have all these great things that happen with regard to housing and affordable housing programs, we end up, as all things sometimes happen to, where they end up is a study committee. There is just too much to be done with regard to what's affordable housing, to meet housing crises in cities around the state, because what you have in Kingman is different from what they have in Scottsdale, it's different from what they have in Yuma, and this approach that some have been taking just hasn't been working. And it really would centralize, if you will, the, the planning process, and that's where planners across the state economic development, downtown partnership-type entities, everyone has weighed in, there's just so much to unravel. So it looks like the housing bill is going to end up a study committee, where there may be something else that comes along, that remains to be seen. So we'll find out as, as the session goes on, since as, as Mr. Foggan said, we're only halfway there. With regard to transportation, I just wanted to mention that the whole, as I've mentioned before, the whole half-cent sales tax extension in Maricopa County, that is the leverage that the rural communities have been able to exert. You know, if you want to extend, if you want our permission to go to a vote in Maricopa County to extend your half-cent sales tax, you need to give us in rural Arizona something. And so Representative Tim Dunn of Yuma, he has a bill, twenty-three ninety-six, and Colleen, I'm not sure if your projects are still on there, I need to confirm that, because I know some were local. Representative Cobb, as the appropriations chair, has been very clear that she wants to make sure that those on the list are truly on state routes and have ADOTs backing. So as you know, WACOG and NACOG presented a list that Representative Dunn went with that is ever-changing. I continue to work directly with Kevin Adam with the Rural Transportation Advisory Council on that, so you never know if things come or come off with regard to the city of Kingman, we can, we can work on that as we go. And I've been working with Representative Dunn also. Another thing, just want to, of significance, and then I'll wrap up and answer any questions with regard to what's going to be on the ballot. The legislative senate and the House have both passed the resolution about voter ID requirement. Obviously, whenever the, whoever's in charge of the House and the Senate always wants to drive red meat issues for their members, to drive, in this case, Republicans want to drive Republicans to the polls in November. So, a ballot measure that would require voter ID moving forward is an issue similar to that, that falls in that camp for one side. It obviously went on party lines, but it is going to be on the November ballot. And one thing with regard to the, I wanted to clarify with regard to the transportation issue that I just mentioned, while that has stalled in committee, it's still part of the negotiations. I mean, Tim Dunn, let's see how hard he, he leans in and says, I want these rural transportation projects, if you want my vote. He also may have some things on water, but that's, that's how it is when you have a thirty-one twenty-nine House and a sixteen fourteen Senate, every, all ninety of them are the most powerful people in Arizona. So, we'll, we'll see what happens as, as we proceed in the second half. Mr. Vice Mayor and members of council, Ms. Foggan, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Tom, for that report. Council members, any questions? Those of you via Zoom? Okay. Tom, we, once again, we appreciate that report, and, anyway.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, and enjoy working with Colleen and Mr. Foggan, they do a great job and keep us on our toes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no other discussion on that, item five B, city's role in ADA enforcement. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't remember if this was at last council meeting or the council meeting before. Counselor Mello had asked about kind of what the city's role is in ADA enforcement compliance, I think directly as it relates to existing businesses. And so as we, we regrouped with the team, it became clear that this was something for the city attorney to share with you, so Carl has a presentation to kind of get you in the know on what our role is. So, Carl.
Hopefully this should be pretty quick, just kind of the basics, if you go to the next slide there. As most of us are aware, the Americans with Disabilities Act came into law under George H.W. Bush in ninety. It's to, it was a comprehensive package to ensure civil rights for folks that had disabilities, to give them the same opportunities to participate in the mainstream American life, and it was, as I say, modeled closely after the Civil Rights Act. Slide. And what it does, it notes to be protected under the ADA, you have to be fit under these definitions of a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities, and have a history or record of such impairment. And again, it doesn't, it keeps it very blank and wide open for the interpretation to evolve as this needs to change. Next. And more specifically to the issue we're talking about is those structural barriers, elimination of structural, of architectural barriers, to allow those folks that are, that have disabilities, to allow them to be able to enter in facilities that are covered by the ADA. Next. And it says the, the facilities must comply with the ADA standards, but also required to comply with local and state standards regarding building, building requirements. And as they note, there are thousands of jurisdictions out there that have their own building codes, and some of those codes require accessibility requirements, some of them don't. And ours pretty much comply with the ADA. This is kind of the meat of the question, it's the enforcement of the state codes is the responsibility of the local and state government, and it says the, and that's usually through plan reviews and building inspections. And ADA relies on, as they say, the traditional method of civil rights enforcement through litigation in federal courts. Local officials do not have the authority to enforce ADA on behalf of the federal government. So what that means is, we're involved in the architectural and accessibility issues during the building or remodeling phase, so that's building plan review and those inspections. Once that's moved on, everything goes through the feds. So it's a federal process through the Department of Justice, and actually, everything I've got that I picked up here in this presentation is straight from the Department of Justice website. Next slide. This is just a, it's, sorry, the text is small. There's three ways that you can file an ADA complaint. There's an online form, you can mail one in, or you can fax it. Next. What you need to put in that complaint is obviously going to be the contact information of the person who has agreed, the business institution, corporation that is having those accessibility issues, a description of the act of the discrimination, or the dates, or whatever happened, and then any necessary documentation you need to supply. Next. I'm going through this really fast. Once that complaint gets processed through the Department of Justice, they have a few methods of how they handle it. They can contact the person filing complaint for more information, they can refer that through an ADA mediation program, and that's, I would suspect, probably the predominant method of resolution. I've, I've participated in the ADA remediation program, and they generally will have local mediators in communities. I think the one we dealt with was out of Havasu, and what they do is they, they try to basically mediate the issue between the two parties. So the instance that we had is we had someone file a complaint about, I'm going to say it was some locks on some restroom doors in one of our parks, we were contacted by the mediator, we looked at it, realized, yeah, that these weren't compliant, and basically corrected that, that, that issue, made it, the person who filed the complaint was satisfied, I think, with that result, the mediator was fine with that result, and it closes out that complaint. And like I say, it seems to be the most predominant method they utilize. If it's something that the Department of Justice thinks is much more serious, obviously they can relate to the Attorney General's or the prosecuting arm of the United States Attorney's Office for an investigation, or they could refer it to another agency, the E O C, Department of Housing, there's another, various agencies, depending on the type of complaint is where it could get referred to. They could continue with the investigating of the complaint, or just go straight to litigation. That's the real quick, down and dirty on the ADA. The state has sort of a parallel program, we have some state rules and regulations that cover a lot of the same things, including the structural and accessibility issues, and that complaint process runs through the Arizona Attorney General's office, and again, they have the same methods, they have an online form that you can fill out, and they can work through the process, like the same with investigation, litigation, or mediation. And then finally, the, really the third option is a few of these laws allow a private claim, meaning that person who's been aggrieved can sue the individual or the corporation or the company. So that's kind of the quick scope of ADA and the enforcement, and like I say, our role is fairly limited, it's just that, that front end, front-loaded with the, the remodel, the remodel or billing of facilities.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Councilwoman Mello, I know you brought this forward, is there any more comments about this to start us off?
Well, I just wanted to, you know, our constituents to understand that the city really doesn't have the power to enforce these laws, but we do have the information, I have the information, and if you want help in filing a complaint, I'm happy to help you, just reach out to me at the city, email me, phone me, I'm happy to help you.
And just kind of an FYI, I did send out a request for some pamphlets. Who knows when that's going to happen, but I sent out a request to try and get some, but like I say, everything's available online, if you have online access. If not, like I say, you can call someone, we can reference you, refer you over to, to either the Department of Justice or the Arizona Attorney General's.
Yeah, and so if you get those pamphlets, they'll be available to the city, that's wonderful, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Carl, I did have a comment too, and maybe just to clarification, so that everybody understands better. For example, what was in the ADA code ten years ago, as opposed to now, I know some people expect that business to upgrade to the most current laws, and there's been just slight changes, but, so can you explain that a little bit so people understand? Because I think that's where a lot, some complaints come into play.
So when it's talking about the structural issues, and I think that's what we mean when, when accessibility issues change and modify, yeah, that, those are only going to be, the required changes in the, in the structure of the building only have to come into play when there's some certain remodels, and there'll be a threshold, if it's a, if it's a lower-cost remodel, you may not have to bring it up to the most recent standards, but if that cost exceeds whatever X amount is, and I don't know what it is off the top of my head, or percentage of the, the remodel cost of the business, then there will be, need to be a more thorough remodeling. And I think something like that, when we did our sidewalks, is what kind of kicked in, we had to do some of our sidewalks.
Correct. Manager Foggan?
I would just add to that, that it also is also based on the, the historic nature of the building as well, or how long the building has been in place. There's, there's a certain criteria that our, our building department goes through to determine what, what additional ADA requirements will need to happen. So it, it is, there is these thresholds, but there are also age of the building as part of that, too.
Right, and to follow up, just to address, if there's an inability because of the structure of the building, the age of the building, and the, and whatever, that you can't make those, maybe those necessarily structural changes, then there could be a process change where that business may adapt on how they serve somebody with a disability, it may just have to modify how they deal with that.
Great, I appreciate that, way it just gives us more information for understanding how the process works. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Once again, we appreciate those department reports. Item number six on our agenda, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Foggan?
I have no announcements for tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman Samley?
None tonight, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Mello?
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know that I attended the Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission meeting, and we were updated from airport manager Doug Breckenridge on the airport, and then Bennett Brantley updated us on the economic development in the industrial park.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Nelson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Staley?
I also have no announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Samley and I were able to attend the veteran court, that was the last two weeks, wasn't it? I was, oh, no, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Mello, I apologize for that. And just once again, thanks to our city magistrate and that program that is helping our veterans. And then one announcement is the BASH's grand reopening tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and of course, all are invited to attend that. Just wanted to remind everybody about that. Otherwise, I have no other announcements either. I think that's it. Number, item number seven, council requests for future reports and updates. Anybody? Okay, hearing none. I would like to have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All approved, say aye. Aye. Good night, everybody.